This is the Community Consolidated School District 46 Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, June 5th, beginning at 6:00 PM here at Frederick School. I need a roll call, please, for our call to order.
Yes. Mack?
Here.
Brayden?
Here.
Nash?
Here.
Albert?
Here.
LaCroy? Absent. Miller? Absent. Weedman? Absent.
Okay, we do have quorum. Please join me for the pledge. Thank you. I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda, please.
I'll move. One second.
Okay.
Mack?
Aye.
Albert?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Look, oh, Nash?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any public, no public comments signed up at the front end? Okay. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to the presenters this evening. The first one we have on our list is the Avon Garden Celebration this evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Mack. I'm just going to introduce this right here from my seat. We have some wonderful adults and children here with us this evening to share information about the creation of the Avon Garden. And I don't want to, I don't want to spoil their, their surprises or steal their thunder, but I simply want to say that what they are going to share tonight is what happens when some people who care deeply about something just band together and say, "Let's get it done." We are so grateful to you, and I cannot wait for you to share with the board what it is you have done for Avon.
Can you hear me now? Awesome. We would like to thank you for allowing us to come here and cheer our progress for our outdoor learning space. We are super excited because it really has come together, just like Dr. Glickman said, and so many people have helped. Board members have reached out and said, you know, "Here's some people you could contact." Parents, just, it truly is a community effort, and we couldn't have done it without everyone. And it really does go with all of our mission. It is also part of the D-46 strategic plan, the facility's goal, and it was to enhance our outdoor learning spaces. So it definitely, Avon had a lot to enhance because we started with basically just land. So it really has come together. Annie's going to speak in a moment, but Annie Schultz was kind of our, she's a teacher and PTF parent, and we couldn't have done all of this without her taking charge and just going with it. And she really went with it. And our PTF really supported us through the fund run, so our whole community supported us because they raised thousands of dollars through the fund run to help with this. And Annie will tell you more about other people that have helped throughout the year, and we have the Loffler family here. Time, effort, money, everything you could ask was donated to us, and just the sheer amount of time this Loffler spent at Avon, literally with the hammer and building, it was amazing. So I'm just so proud to be a part of this, and really, other than just allowing them to go, it really is a them situation. So I'm going to turn it over to Annie Schultz, who is going to share more.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Annie Schultz. I teach third grade at Avon, and I have two students in the district. One is moving on to Frederick this year, which breaks my heart a little bit, and my daughter is at GMS. So I love our district, and I love putting all my time and effort that I can into helping the district. And luckily, we have the best supporters at Avon as part of our community. So what you see in front of you, the picture, is kind of where we started last fall. So over the summer, it, we actually started talking about this a couple of years ago. So February, or the fall of 2022 is when we started to plan for our outdoor space, and we were told we have to stop because that's when the building audits were all happening, and we didn't know if there were going to be additions or if there was going to be, part of the plan was going to be outdoor learning spaces and the referendum or whatever. And so we were kind of put on hold. And so then the spring of '23, we got to start going at it again. So what you see was kind of our first thought of outdoor learning was these stumps. So that was our plan for a very budget-friendly, because they were free, outdoor classroom. And so that, originally, that was like our first go at it. And so we had those over the, last summer, and then we quickly realized in the fall, it didn't really work well for outdoor learning because we have recess from 9:50 to 1 o'clock. So kids are outside on our playground for a very long time. So that didn't really work for outdoor learning, so we kept brainstorming. So we had this back corner, which you can see there, here's the back corner. So you can see it in this picture, it's all the way back there. And those little playhouses were also donated by a local church. They came over last summer and built them, and so the kids could play. A teacher at our school also helped with that. So here's the back corner, and you're going to see some before pictures. And so we started last fall, just kind of coming up with an idea for the space, space planning, what do we want it to be? And this is where the PTF, and there were local people like Lurvy's Garden Center, there were grants, there were all kinds of things that came together to make this space happen. So our first part was we were planting natives. So the whole purpose of this space is that we planted native plants, so that the goal is that it's the least amount of maintenance, and it's good for the environment. So it's, it makes sense for this space. This is in like the back corner of Avon, and we have one place where you can get water at Avon outside. And it's like hundred, and I'm really bad at asking, maybe about like hundreds of feet, right, Ryan? From where the garden is. And so we knew we needed something that was, you know, hardy, and that we wanted to bring native animals and birds and, but, you know, all insects and things to the space. So natives was our goal of the space. And then the goal was how can we get kids to use this space? So the deck was, the time was donated by the Ruiz family. They have a company called Expert Fence Company. So they donated their time to build the deck. And then we created a path so that the kids could walk up to the deck and use the space. The goal was during recess, and then hopefully that teachers could start using the space too. And then last winter, so we did this kind of in the fall, planted some plants and made a path, and the deck went in. And then last winter, we were able, I was able to get one of the foundation grants, which was amazing. So thank you to all of you who support the foundation, to add another $2,000 of things to support the outdoor learning space. So that was huge for us. So that kind of helped us spring into the spring and what we could do with the space. So my favorite are those before pictures. So look at those. That's that corner that you see. And so it was nothing. It was just, it was a stump and overgrown things. It was just, it was, it's a huge space, but it just had no use to the students, and that was, you know, we wanted them to be able to use the space. So then there's our during, and then you're going to see a bunch of after pictures. So the Loffler family, the PTF, all came together this spring to kind of finish off the space with money from the grant and money that was donated, time that was donated. And Haley created this amazing awning to cover the, the space because we have zero shade also on our playground, like zero, except under the slides and stuff. And so it was amazing to have a space where kids can go and be in the shade. There's benches under there, so the kids can sit, and teachers can bring their classes out. Haley had this great idea for these little stumps that the classes and kids are decorated, that are going to create the path where they'll walk in the space, which will be amazing. That's something we're going to work on this summer. And then you can get a better picture of the space and what it looks like. Actually, right now it looks amazing because we have more plants growing, and there's, Haley made a fence that is on the border on the outside that even looks better than this, but there's a really good view. It looks fake. Like it looks like it's not real, right? Because it looks so good. So it's really cool. So now, at the end of the year, our students and teachers were able to use the space as intended. So teachers were able to sign out time to bring their class up there, and they would do reading, or they were doing different kind of learning activities from the space because there's enough bench seating for a whole class to be out there, which was amazing to see. And kids will go in there during recess if there's not a class there. Those arbors that you see, they have little gates so they can close, which was part of the plan that if during recess, we could close off the space if a class wants to use it. So making the space way more functional for actually outdoor learning, learning from nature. So it really has, was amazing this spring to see the teachers and classes starting to use the space. And we know that in the future, we hope to see that continue, but also to do more learning about nature, about gardening, about natives, about how we can all help our environment and support our environment and learn from our environment. So that's all kind of the exciting part. Now that we have the space, I feel like we can do a lot more of that in the future. So very exciting. Again, we couldn't have done it without the support of our Avon community, of the community in general, of Autumn's, our PTO president, Haley, who did so much work, time and effort. All of our families really have been there. Last summer, we were all there watering. I mean, we're, we spend way too much time at Avon. And so it's been, you know, definitely a community effort. Barbara's supported us the whole time, you know, never, almost never, like, too many, you know, she's just like, "Yes, I trust you. Do it. We're, yes, I want to, I want to support this." So that's been really helpful too, in the whole process. So thank you, guys, for sharing, wanting to share what we did, and we are very excited about what's to come in the future.
So come visit us.
Yeah, visit us. Yes. Anytime.
No, I, any questions or comments? I thank you for an incredible presentation, and not only is it beautiful, but such an amazing space for learning and for friendship and for connections, which is just wonderful. Thank you for that. I'll open to my other board colleagues for comments or questions.
I just want to say a huge heartfelt thank you. I'm going to cry because this is just amazing, all the work and time so many of you have put into this, and the thoughtfulness and the planning, and just giving students that true connection to place and home here in Illinois. Like it's, we have amazing plants here in Illinois. We don't have to go to mountain scapes to experience awe in nature, and you're giving that to them right in their backyard at that school. So thank you.
Yeah, I think it's pretty awesome. And then towards the end, I saw the bird. I was like, "Oh, the plant, the bird life is starting to come in." I realized that it wasn't real.
That was Haley's idea. She's like before, because our plants are, you know, baby plants right now, she's like, "We're going to put birds so they understand what they're supposed to do."
I love it. That's awesome. A very thoughtful and intentional. The only other thing I wanted to just call out is, are you guys on cicada watch over there? Or what's the deal?
Yeah, well, we have a new tree that the Girl Scouts actually planted this year, along with the PTF. We funded it together. And we are very worried because it's a baby tree, but we haven't seen, we saw one when we were planting in the native garden. The kids were digging, and the kid's like, "I found a cicada." And we look at it, and it was, the shovel had gotten it, so it was not surviving the experience. Haley was like, "Let's just put it back in the hole." But other than that, I don't, we haven't seen any around. So we're aware, but yeah, they haven't, they haven't come.
Awesome. Well, great job.
Thank you.
Avon folks and friends, we will completely understand if you have other things to do in your evening. You're welcome to stay, and then the very next piece is a budget presentation. You're welcome to stay for it. But if you're going to choose to go, I'm going to ask Dr. Mack, can I just have a quick moment and do a little tiny piece of the superintendent's report right now while they're here? Okay. Is that okay? If you hang out? Okay, because, board, I wanted to talk during the superintendent's report tonight, a little bit about some matters of student voice. And one of those matters comes directly from Avon Center School, and it's something that happened last week. And maybe some of you saw this on Facebook because I know that Leslie did a great job of posting it, but in case you didn't, I want to share what it was like to be there live for this moment. So, you know, the last day of school, I went to every one of our schools to celebrate with students and staff, and I think most, if not all, of our cabinet members did the same. And I started my day at Avon. Excuse me. And I was getting ready to leave, you know, we came, came for arrival, and I'm getting ready to leave, and I'm standing in the hallway, and a student, and I happened to be there when a student came up to his teacher, excuse me, and said, "I have something to tell you. I had a, a brain spark, a brain, brain blast. That's right. I had a brain blast this morning, and I asked Ms. Zee if I could speak during the assembly today. And Ms. Zee said yes. And I'm so excited, and shh, don't tell anybody." So I get to witness this. So of course, now I'm like, I cannot possibly leave Avon, and I'm, I'm grabbing Leslie. It's, the time is now. You got to get here. So this fourth grade student, now, so then I go to talk to Barbara about it, and I said, "I hear this student is going to speak." Now, obviously, she knows the student well enough to have some sense about what this child will speak about. But she said, "You know me. I'm going to say yes. If a child wants to do something, and it's going to be good for the school, I'm going to say yes." Similar to what you just witnessed, right? Mrs. Zara saying, "Yeah, yeah, come on in. Let's do it." And so this young man stands up in front of, how many students do we have? 350? Yeah, 350 students plus, you know, 50 staff members, 40 staff members, and starts talking about what his years at Avon Center School have been, and how he hopes that, and he starts talking about how, "I hope all of you in your, the rest of your, your middle school experiences and, and high school and on to college, you will always remember what it was to be an Avon Nova, and how much it meant to him to be an Avon Noah." And the kids were silent listening to this. So I want to thank you, Mrs. Zara, for allowing that kind of student voice at your school and celebrating it. And to, to everyone, our Board of Education, all of educators for nurturing that kind of an environment where a student would feel comfortable doing that. So thank you. And with that, hang out and listen to a budget report or... Earthly. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. And with that wonderful introduction, here's the budget report, the tentative budget report.
Okay, this is the tentative budget presentation of CCST 46 for the upcoming school year. The district mission, I'm going to focus on empowering learners this evening. Everything that goes into the budget is about empowering learners. This includes supporting all students, regular education, special education, and multilingual learners. We're guided by our strategic plan, and the backbone of any good school district is our board policy. Review, expand, and clarify financial practices through increased transparency. That is all about the budget, and maintaining an operating fund balance which is adequate as per fund, fund, ballot, fund policy for colon two zero. Here is the timeline of the budget. We discussed the preliminary budget on May 15th, followed by the presentation of the tentative budget this evening. We'll be on public display from June 26th, and will be reviewed and adopted at the public hearing on September 18th. Here we have a quote from Abe Lincoln. I believe he was a huge fan of Axis. So what has changed since the budget? We have the insurance renewals, which will be approved this evening. Reminder that we are a tier one district for the purposes of EBF, or Evidence Based Funding. We are 66% adequately funded with a $17 million adequacy gap, as per the latest Illinois Report Card, which is 2023. So the purpose of the additional funding is to eliminate the adequacy gaps over many years, especially for districts like ours, which are tax capped by the property tax extension limitation law. Back in 2018, we were actually 65% adequately funded, and we're actually an EBF tier two fund, tier two district back then. EBF has actually changed those tiers, so we're actually the same amount, 66% funded, but we're actually a tier one district right now. So we can be proud of what we accomplished, what we have. We have excellent schools. Again, this is the most updated Illinois Report Card data. So here is the all funds budget. As you can see, we have a deficit position from our operating budget plus the deficit from capital projects and from payments from debt service. These are to pay for the year three expenditures of the three-year priority capital plan. Here is the operating budget showing the $2 million difference between revenues and expenditures. Here is the breakdown of the revenues. 58% comes from local taxpayers, meaning the levy. 34% from the state, mainly from EBF, and federal funding makes up 4%. As last year, here's a breakdown of our expenditures. 62% comes from our own staff and their benefits, and a further 14% from purchase services. That's GSF to clean our buildings at night, DORM to transport our kids, and organic life next year to feed them breakfast and lunch. And 11% goes to debt payments of our general obligation fund, general obligation bonds, and debt certificates. And a further 6% goes to outplace tuition for students with C-Doll and private placements. Here is a recap of what we have planned for next year. The Avon roof is part of the three-year capital work. We have the refresh cycle for Chromebooks and a new camera system at Frederick. So here's the final, the next steps, public display of the budget for the community. I will update the budget through September and through the, to the public hearing with any material changes. Once approved and filed, I will begin work on the new five-year projections, likely for a finance committee. Any questions for the tentative budget?
Mr. Wildman, for purposes of clarity, can you just give us the timeline for the, when the referendum funds will be available to us in our budget? Because I think that it's important to note that this budget does not include those yet.
It does not, and we actually have a slide in an upcoming presentation, which Lynn will very eloquently walk through that slide. Perfect.
But I, but verifying...
Oh, I'm, yes.
Next year's budget does not include those additional revenues.
It, it, we have a timing gap of when the actual money is received, and then we have an extra year because we made a commitment to the community that we, we were going to use those initial funds to pay off the, the existing debt service for an extra year. So it'll be available in years 26, 27.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, that'll take us to the, thank you, Mr. Wildman.
Thank you.
It'll take us to the board report section of this evening, and at your leisure, I'm going to start with mine tonight, to see if that's okay. I try to go both ways. I wanted to thank the GMS and Park staff and teachers for wonderful graduation ceremonies this past weekend. And additionally, I'd like to thank the Grayslake North High School for the use of their fields. It was a really beautiful day for both ceremonies, hot but breezy, and it was just very nice to be there as well. Tomorrow, in the same room, is going to be the executive, the first, or my first executive committee meeting for the IASB executive team, and they're coming here to have a meeting in this room, and we'll have food and stuff through the IASB team. And that, my understanding is that's going to result in some planning for some of the upcoming dinner events that we go to, the learning events that we go to as a board, as well as some other issues pertaining to the triple I conference coming up in the fall. So at the next board meeting, I should have an update on how that went, and they had been looking for space to, to, to have the meeting. And so I'm grateful to Dr. Glickman and Mrs. Gluck and everybody in the staff for making this room available to everybody tomorrow. So I'll let you know how that goes. And that's mine.
I just have two items. One is a quick reminder that Grayslake Pride is Sunday at high noon. So if you're interested in participating, walking with the district, you can contact me, you can contact Amy Gluck, and you can show up at 11:30 in your pride, in your pride garb. And looking forward to it. It'll be our fourth year representing the district in Grayslake, and looking forward to seeing everyone there. Also, it looks like it's going to be a nice day, too. And families are welcome. It's a very family friendly, friendly event, and so children and families are, are welcome. And then I wanted to add my thanks about graduation. It was wonderful, and really highlight the O&M staff who put everything up, switched it over in, what, an hour between GMS and Park, and then took everything down and took it back to GMS. So much appreciated. And also to the amazing photographer, as always, thank you, Ms. Armstrong. It was just a really nice event. And then the last thing I wanted to say about graduation relates to student voice, actually, because our student leaders from GMS, who, who we invited into our board meetings this year, had an idea to make graduation speeches more inclusive. And there were, how many students who spoke?
Eight to 10?
Yeah, yeah, we had, it was, it was absolutely lovely, and it was really moving to hear their comments, and really appreciated the opportunity to bring student voice in, and just another acknowledgement of the student leadership to come up with that idea and figure it out, and then actually make it happen. So thank you.
Thank you. So to echo on that, because student voice, and specifically the GMS graduation speakers was also one of my items. And in addition to what Ms. Brayden has already said, it really just showed how our mission is permeating through the kids because that was an awesome display of empowering learners' equity and cultivating community, like on full display. It was absolutely outstanding. I also know that there was some, like, audio challenges. And I just want to give a special shout out to Mr. Smith, the principal at GMS, because he has had a challenging year. And then to end his year, conducting a pretty awesome commencement speech in light of that was just like cherry on... conducting a pretty awesome commencement speech in light of that was just like cherry on top of everything else he's had to juggle this year. So, just special kudos to Mr. Smith. In addition to the Grayslake Pride event taking place this Sunday, right, Ms. Brayden? There is also a Lake County Pride Fest that's taking place on Saturday from 2:00 to 10:00. It's taking place at the Round Lake Beach Cultural and Civic Center. So, lots of pride happenings going on this weekend. And then, in short order, about a week and a half thereafter, we will have our annual Juneteenth Celebration of Freedom Walk here in our very own Grayslake. And thank you, Dr. Glickman, for picking up this year's pens from the farmer's market. Thank you this year for us. There are still opportunities for those interested in volunteering, so if you have an interest, obviously, the entire board is welcome, as CCSD 46 is proud, you know, representatives of this annual event. But if you want to get involved and you have not yet let me know your interests, please do so. Happy to help, happy to have you. And that's all that I have.
And I don't really have anything to add, other than congratulations again to the students who just graduated on Sunday, and thanks to the staff who did all that setup and helped by reading names and making sure the students and families felt welcome and enjoyed the ceremony.
Thank you. I'll hand it over to Dr. Glickman for the remaining portion of your superintendent's report.
Well, our students finished school on Friday, and then a number of hardy souls started summer school on Monday. And so, Mrs. Gluck is going to talk about that.
Yeah, thanks. So, I'm just going to share a little bit about our programs that are running this summer. So, we have several programs. There are two programs that started on Monday at Park Campus. The first is Bridges, and that's our Title I Summer School. We have 46 students in grades K through four that are attending that, so there are five classes. And then, in addition to that, we have Adelante, that is being held at Park Campus. We have 175 multilingual students attending that, that are currently enrolled, and that is a total of 17 classrooms, which is 17 classroom teachers, three paraprofessionals, and two interpreters all helping to support that. So, lot of students and a lot happening over at Park Campus right now. In addition to that, we have ESY, that's being held at our extended school year. That's being held over at Prairie View School, and that has 89 students, pre-K through eighth grade. And there are lots of staff that are helping over there, too. So, really great programs and things happening. And then, as you know, we have a new program that's going to be running this summer that we are utilizing through the Lake County Regional Office of Education, and that is their summer boot camp. And it is being run through the Illinois Virtual Schools and Academies, so IBSA. And we have 64 students that are signed up to attend that. It's a seven-week program, so it starts June 11th and runs live sessions through July 25th. But it also provides opportunities for students to continue their work, and they have individual pathways that they're going to be working towards with that, and they can continue all the way through August 2nd. So, great opportunities for our kids this summer.
Thank you. We also have some wonderful opportunities for our leadership team this summer. So, this upcoming week, members of our leadership team will be at the first-ever EdRed and Lake ROE Mini Summit that's going to be happening. It's a half-day experience of professional development that is countywide and available for our leaders. So, we're excited about that. And then, on June 17th, we have a leadership retreat that we have planned. We're doing that in conjunction with Lake Villa School District 41. So, we are going to be learning with other colleagues, which is always exciting for us, right? We share what we know, they share what they know, we all get better. And that's going to be focused on PLCs, Professional Learning Community, and the work that we're doing in our school district here, and what 41 is doing. We'll be learning together about that, so we're excited. Board, on Jul, well, I'll back it up. So, remember back in the winter, in the cold winter, we learned that GMS was, you know, I'm not going where you think I'm going. GMS was being given a lovely plaque from the Grayslake Historical Society. They are the recipient of the historical plaque this year, and it's been posted outside the school, and it's lovely. And at that time, we did say thank you to the Historical Society, but we also said, let's wait for the weather to get warm, and let's do a ribbon cutting. So, we're going to do that, and I did connect with Kristi Brayden and with Stephen Mack, and we were looking at doing that on July 17th before our board meeting. So, we have our regular board meeting at 6 o'clock. We thought we would gather over at GMS at the plaque, in the outer grounds of GMS, and do a ribbon cut, cutting, have a few people to speak. So, I did business today where all business is done, which is the Grayslake Farmer's Market, and saw Charlotte Renahan, who is going to be available to be there. We'll invite some other important people to join us. So, does that date sound okay for everyone? We'll do 5 o'clock? July, July 17th, July 17th. And, you know, that time is flexible. We don't imagine a very long presentation, but we just thought, oh, let's book it for 5, and then people can slowly matriculate over here for the meeting. Seem okay? Okay, great. And then, back to Student Voice. So, I already spoke with you about Avon's Assembly, but I also wanted to let you know that yesterday I met with Mr. Smith from GMS and Mr. Malamed for Park Campus and talked about dates for the upcoming school year for students to come to the board. And so, we did pick some dates. We are looking at having both schools come kind of late in the fall first. So, October 23rd for GMS, and then the following board meeting, November 6th for Park Campus. They'll do a presentation and then have students sit at the board table, as we've been doing. Then, we picked a couple of back-to-back kind of mid-year dates, February 12th, February 26th. So, the 12th for GMS, the 26th for Park. The principals were thinking that probably mid-year, we might not, they might not do a presentation. They might just have students sitting at the board table, but we thought, we'll leave it open. If there's something specific that they want to present about, they will. And then, they wanted to avoid May. They felt like it was hard to get kids here in May for all of the understandable reasons, how busy our students are. So, they're looking at April 9th for GMS and April 23rd for Park Campus as kind of an end-of-year or springtime presentation and students at the board. Sound all right? All right, that's it for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Glickman. That moves us on to our consent agenda for this evening. So, I need a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda, which includes the personnel addendum that was sent earlier today.
I'll move.
A second. Brayden?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Albert?
Aye.
And Mack?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That moves us to our action items. We have a few to take a vote on this evening. Our first one is, I need a motion to approve the CLIC workers' compensation renewal as presented.
So, move.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Okay.
Mack?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
And Albert?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next item is a motion to approve the CLIC property casualty insurance renewal as it had been presented. Need a motion for that.
I'll move.
Second.
Brayden?
Aye.
Albert?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
And Nash?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is a motion to approve, the motion to approve the final FY 2023, 2024 school calendar.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay.
Albert?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
And Nash?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next up, motion to approve the donation from the Grayslake Park District as it had been presented. I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay.
Mack?
Aye.
Brayden? Albert?
Aye.
And Nash?
Aye.
Okay, and next, I need a motion to approve the press policy updates that had been presented at the last policy meeting.
So, moved.
Second.
Yeah, if you want, yeah, I was just going to turn it over to you.
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, I just wanted to follow up with you, Board, on one of the policies that you had asked about. So, I'll roll us back to our last meeting. I had been asked to look into something regarding policy 5100, the Staff Development Program. And the specific question was in relation to, in addition to the policy that the board could add in if you so chose. And that is about, if the district has a practice of providing CPR and first aid and staff development for all staff, we could add in, you could add in a paragraph about that. And so, I expressed at the time that we don't currently offer that for all staff, and I was asked to look into, would that be possible? So, we do have information about that, and I want to start by sharing with you my information about who is offered that on a regular basis. So, we do regularly, one moment. We do regularly provide that training to nurses, PE teachers, administrators, coaches, athletic directors, custodians, and any people who work with students with involved medical needs. So, that is already offered. So, the question was, well, you know, would it be possible to offer it for everybody? So, we did look into that. When we offer that training, we, it's a per-person cost. And the cost can vary from $20 a person to $100 a person. We're currently able to get it at a lower end, and we're glad for that, but we don't know if that will always be the case. So, what we'd like to propose to do, and we haven't done in the past, and we love to add this in, is when we schedule it, if there are additional spots in the class, because anytime we bring in a trainer, there's only a certain number of spots, right? If there are extras, if there's extra space, we can offer that to, kind of a first-come, first-served to any staff who would like to do it. We know that would come at an extra cost for the district, but based on how many spaces we think would be available, we don't think that would be a significant cost. Offering it to anyone who wanted to come and kind of providing the training throughout the year for anybody could be pretty costly, and I will remind the board that there are other places to get that kind of training. So, if the board is comfortable with that plan, that we just offer first-come, first-served when we have some spots open, then we wouldn't, you wouldn't add that paragraph into the board policy. Does that sound acceptable to you? Okay, all right. So, that was the one follow-up. I don't think there was anything else that we were going to talk about again tonight. Okay.
Nash?
Aye.
Albert?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
And Mack?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We do not have anything on the unfinished business portion of the agenda, so we're moving on to the new business and our Maintaining Excellence project update with Dr. Glickman and her team.
All righty. Well, you can see, whoops, that I'm with some very distinguished people. I have Mr. Wildman, our CSBO, with me. I also have our architects with us this evening, so thank you for coming in town. We have Dawn, Dawn, Ron Dirks, sorry about that, and Matt Verdon with us, and they have a lot of information to share as well this evening. I'm going to get started by talking about our mission. So, we are so pleased that the referendum passed, and we're able to offer many new opportunities in years to come for our students, in particular related to our facilities and maintaining what we currently have. All of that empowers our learners and creates equity from building to building, and of course, all with the goal of cultivating community. The strategic plan goals are in front of you. I'm not going to read them to you, but these are the two topics that this work is involved with, and it has to do with clarifying our financial practices and transparency, and expanding, reviewing, and clarifying our comprehensive master facilities plan. The approved limiting rate request provides $6 million annually. 50% for capital needs, 50% for operating needs. This should be very familiar to you by now. That the capital needs that were agreed upon are funding emergency response systems and security cameras, addressing maintenance and infrastructure needs, updating our libraries for collaboration in STEM, and reconfiguring, renovating student support spaces. And then, we have our operating needs, which is really about maintaining what we have, attracting, retaining, and training quality teachers, protecting current programming, and maintaining class sizes. This slide should be familiar to you, those last ones should be, Board, this one as well, because I came and presented this slide to you right after the referendum passed. And Kristi, this is what you were asking about, about when the funds are available. So, that first line is this school year. Nothing happens this school year regarding funds being available, except that the limiting rate passed. In the 24-25 school year, the board will levy that limiting rate increase of $6 million. But that's just levying it, money doesn't come in yet. Additional money from taxpayers is not collected until the next year. 25-26, indeed, that money is collecting, the district is collecting that $6 million. However, it is not available to us for new expenditures. Why? Because that's our last year of paying off the debt for the building of Park Campus. So, in order not to raise taxes further for our community, we're bringing in that money, but then also sending it right out the door to pay off that last payment, which means that it's not until the 26-27 school year that the $6 million per year is available to us, and of course, years beyond that. Now, that sounds glum, but as you will hear this evening, we do have a plan for being able to start that work prior to the 26-27 school year through the selling of bonds, and we'll be talking about that in a bit. So, our next steps and considerations are continuing to update our long-range facility plan with World Architects and prioritize the projects. We'll be working with our underwriters to sell those bonds, and Mr. Wildman's going to be talking about that. And Board, as I've already shared with you, you'll need to consider your tolerance for future deficit spending before receiving that additional $3 million in the education fund from the levy, which won't come in until 26-27. As Mr. Wildman has already shared with you, next year's deficit is a $2 million deficit. That's not surprising, because the money isn't available to us yet, but it's just something you're going to have to continue to consider, because we won't have that additional $3 million in our ed fund until the 26-27 school year. I'm going to hand this off to you.
Okay, I'm going to talk about those next steps. So, updating the long-range facility plan. We're calling it LRFP, just because it's a very long-winded way of saying a long-range facility plan. What's happening right now, Scott Gonkey's walking with WALD. We actually have a security assessment that's happening as well, so, and we're updating all our long-range facility plans. All that information will be put together with updated timelines, costing escalation, and that will be part of the next long-range facility plan as we look forward for the next 10 years. We're going to hear a lot more about that from our friends from WALD. Here is the funding slash financing plan. There's a lot of information here, and you might recall from when we sold the DSED bonds, there's a lot of legalese that we have to go through, and when we're going through the PTAL, the law, in terms of making sure that everything was okay, in terms of getting everything ready for the limiting rate. All these things need to be, are the legal steps that we need to go through to be able to sell debt certificates or alternate revenue bonds. So, these are the steps that our underwriters given us to be able to raise an initial $20 million. That $20 million... That $20 million will be received soon. It will be received actually in two different pieces, in November, December, and January and February of '24 and '25. The reason that's been structured is for what's called arbitrage, which is a whole different legal set of rules that we have to follow. But the long and short of it is that we will receive the money, as Dr. Glickman stated, before we've actually levied the increase. And that's a good thing for us, because we can start that capital work. Now, I'm going to hand it over to Vaughn and Mac.
Thank you, thank you for having us. I get to talk about all the fun stuff now, now that that's done, is how do you actually go about doing this? So, we put together a quick agenda for this, but start with congratulations. You know, we've been working with you for a year on this. That was a really well-run campaign, and so nice to see your community support that and move forward. So, that's great, but now everybody wants to know, why aren't you building already? Well, there's still stuff that has to happen, and so we're going to talk about what happens next and how we do this. And I want to give you just a little bit of a framework for when we're doing school projects. These are the phases we talk about from a semantic standpoint and how long they typically take. So, the first phase is called schematic design, and that's really about concept. That's the biggest pieces. How does this relate to that? What's next to what? It's not getting down to the detail, it's really laying out the buildings and saying, this is how we do it. That's usually about a two-to-three-month process, and we use what's called a core planning group to do that. And I'll talk a little bit more about each of these as we go forward. The second phase is input, and that's really what most staff are concerned about. It's, I don't care what you're doing with the rest of the building, tell me what you're doing with my room. And so, it's a process we go forward for getting all those details right. And that takes about another two-to-three months to make sure we've got every space we're touching really well-coordinated with our teams. Details is that's us drawing it in the computer. Drawing is an old-fashioned term, but using the computers to create the construction documents. And we're really working with the district administration and our team to make sure we have everything in there so that when we go out to bid and build it, which is the longest period, about 12 to 24 months, depending on what we're doing, everything is really well-done and documented, and then beyond, that's part of the process as well. It's that ongoing evaluation, the following up on warranty items, making sure that everything's working the way it's supposed to. And that's really everybody that's involved. So, that's the schedule. It usually takes about that nine months from the start of design through construction documents and bidding before we actually get to the construction part, which times out well with the bonds, as Chris was talking about. So, we've got three big pieces for this in terms of framing the referenda work. You have the maintenance work, which is what Matt and Scott are working on in terms of the mechanical systems, electrical, security, all those things that aren't really the glamorous parts of it, but are the core of what you're doing. You've got the media centers and the collaboration piece, but there's bigger things involved with that, and we have the support services. If you remember during the long-range planning, however, we looked at everything in the building, because we don't see school construction projects as static. And it was great seeing the outdoor classrooms tonight, because that was something we talked about in the process. And just because it wasn't in the referenda doesn't mean it's not important. The referenda was only, this is what we prioritize for this type of implementation strategy, but everything we're doing in design is going to look at and talk about all the things we did in that long-range plan and make sure that we're also setting it up well for the future, even if that's what we're focused on. So, the core planning groups, in terms of how we see this working on, will really focus on that media center as the guiding principle for that. And because we have the seven different buildings, a core planning group is usually made up of about 25 to 30 people who are really representatives of the larger community. We can do this a couple of different ways. We could treat it building by building, but because this has district goals to it, what we've talked with the administration about is, maybe we want to have a whole core planning group that looks at what's the media center experience want to be from early childhood all the way through eighth grade, talk about setting those big criteria moments together before we break apart and look at how does it apply at each school. And we could do it as elementary schools and the older kids, fifth grade through eighth grade, maybe. We could look at it as everybody, but there's ways for us to figure this out. So, it might be representatives from each school, all being part of that larger core planning group, to set that district-wide criteria. And we'll figure that out as we go, and in terms of what that looks like. We're very flexible in this. It's important to have student voice in that as well. And we'd love to see some of those, maybe the middle-school students, seventh graders, eighth graders, who can feel comfortable talking in front of adults and saying, this was my experience, this is what I want to do. So, we have those voices in the process as well. But still figure out, how do we engage the elementary students as we go forward in the process? Maybe through surveys or questions that we ask, specific around things that the core planning group are looking at. So, they're really representing the larger community and making sure that we're understanding, what do you want to achieve? And then we'll apply that to each of the buildings. So, that's that schematic design phase, and we see that starting in October. That gets you back to school, gets us through some of that long-range planning pieces, and really taking off from there. It'll involve maybe going on some tours of other districts and looking at, what are they doing around their media centers? We'll bring graphic representations, photos, plans of things that we've done together to help with setting that, because you don't know what you don't know. And that's our job to help facilitate that, just like we did with the long-range planning process. So, that's sort of the big picture. How do we get from A to Z in terms of the concept schematic design? Our expectations for them is that they come to every meeting, and they're there not to represent their area, but to think about the big picture. So, if you're involved in the long-range planning pieces that we did leading up to the referenda, same type of process, setting criteria, establishing that, and us looking at, how does this balance throughout all the projects? Remember, with a referenda, this wasn't about, this is the budget for this school, this is the budget for this school, this is the budget for this school. It's, we have this much money to achieve these goals. So, we're going to figure out, how do we move everybody forward at the same time to the same level so that you're setting those district standards as you go forward? And that's what we balance. Conceptual approach here, this is sort of frames what I was just talking about. I forgot I had the sliding here, I would have flipped forward as I went through this. But really, we'll figure that out as we go forward in that schematic design to make sure that we get that greater representation. So, if schematic design's that big picture, the details, that's that staff piece, that's the user group process. And that's where, no matter what the space is, we're going to meet with the actual staff who use that area to lay out all the detail for it. So, using this room as an example, we have some equipment. We've got light switches, we've got power and data, we've got furniture. We've got all the different pieces that go into this room, and we want to make sure we understand all that so we can share that with our engineers. The rest of our team take very detailed notes and meeting minutes and drawings for this, that we can play back to you to make sure that we heard this correctly, which helps reduce changes down the road. And it builds that ownership in the process, where someone says, we talked about that, this is exactly what I thought it was going to look like when we got forward. Our student support spaces, we would run in a similar method to this, in that, as opposed to having core planning groups where it's broader context, this is very specific about what we want to do. So, we'll work with Heather and staff to say, let's talk about the support spaces, what do we need to achieve as a district? But then look at each building specifically and treat that more as part of that user group process. And what it looks like is drawings, where people can see things graphically, the meeting minutes, as I said, three-dimensional images, rendering. It's also where in these spaces, now we're going to materials, so we're going up into that 3D so people can start to see what the spaces actually look like as part of this process. So, this is really sort of the fun, exciting phase where you go, well, I can actually visualize that. Kind of like she said with the picture of that outdoor learning space, it doesn't look real. That's what we're going to do with this part of the phase here as we go forward. So, this is really that detail part. From there, the construction documents is all about us making sure we have everything covered, that it's thoroughly documented, working on solid bid strategy to make sure that we get good bidders coming in to build this. And then the construction for the process doesn't start until 2026. Although, while we're looking at some of these maintenance projects, as Matt will talk about, if there's anything that we're looking at where we could achieve that earlier and say, you know what? Let's tackle this part of it with some of those maintenance things that we're doing in 2025, we would look at that as well. So, that's part of that whole comprehensive process going forward. So, I'm going to turn it over to Matt to talk a little bit about the schedules. Matt is coordinating everything for our office, he's the brains behind all this. I'm just the talky-talk guy in facilitating this, so, Matt?
Yeah, time to get to the non-glamorous part, Vaughn. Jeez, good to hear where I stand. So, we've got two schedules we're going to talk through real quick. The first one is the educational adequacy projects, which is the stuff Vaughn was just talking about. We see that kicking off in the September, October range. That's to make sure that we have all those voices back in the building, they're back from summer break, they're ready to be engaged. That first couple of months, like Vaughn said, we're going through the schematic design process. At the end of that, we'll come back to you guys with an update of what some of those early findings are and what the core planning group is saying. We then get into November and December, we're starting to hit that design development. That's the user group process, working that in around holiday schedules at that time. Starts to get a little tricky, so that may get extended a little bit. We get into then January and February, that's when we're doing really some of the meat of our design work. A lot of that input has been heard. We're now going through that effort, putting together estimates for it. We'll come back with another update at that point, at the end of that phase, or sometime in the middle of that phase with an update of here we are on progress and budget. We then wait until the fall to go out to bid. This gives us a little bit of cushion to get things, some of that schedule needs to be a little bit more flexible. But it also gets us into that late summer, early fall prime bidding window so that we're ready for summer '26 construction to align with when the funding is available. We then look at what we're doing from the long-range facilities plan update. This is the second schedule. So, right now, as was mentioned, Scott and I just finished walking through the buildings to kind of go through and revalidate all the items on the list. There's thousands of line items in that many-page document. Taking off some of the work that's been done over the last few years. Starting to, we're going to start to filter in some of the security survey input that's being done by the other group, and just confirming, like I said, some of those items that are left. Starting in July, then, we're going to start to reevaluate and update budgets to make sure, from inflation standpoint, we're at the right timeline. More importantly, making sure that things are happening in the right sequence to start to align with some of the other work that wants to happen and finding those synergies of where we can get the economy of scale of some bigger projects. And then August, September is when we're going to be ready to have Chris start talking to the underwriters about some of that bond sale, come into the finance committee, come back to you with the update of the plan, and let you know where we're at.
Thanks, Matt. Well, you know, we love a good timeline. This should look similar to, familiar to you, because this looks very much like the timeline we had created from the start to the end of the work we did around the referendum. But this one is very specific to this construction work. And I know it's a little hard to read, but it will be posted on our website, so you're going to be able to look at it kind of close up. But what we have done is organized it with, some of the topics are construction topics, some of them are funding topics, some of them, whoops, well, some of them are our, the architect work, right? And some of them are the actual construction work. And if you can see the purple at the top that says, we're here, right? This is that very beginning planning time, and we're just having conversation. And if you zoom all the way over to the end, you'll see summer 2026, construction begins, that's go time. And just to clarify, our architects believe that we can do all of the work at all of the schools, all of the educational adequacy work in one summer. So, we'll have all of those buildings going on under construction at one time, which is pretty exciting. I do want to mention that it is very possible that next summer, there could be other kinds of construction going on. It could be somewhat related to the educational adequacy, it could be related to our maintenance work that we have to do. So, there could be some construction next summer as well. But the big projects would be the summer of 2026. And a little easier for you to read here, I'm just going to walk you through a consolidated timeline. So, here we are in the summer of 2024, we've done our security assessments, the highest needs are being prioritized. Here we are tonight, June 5th, we're meeting, we're sharing this presentation with you. And we'll continue to give you Board updates throughout the summer, whenever we have new information. Into the fall, funding and financing, Chris went over that with you, looking at selling bonds. We'll have our core planning group come together to meet, to begin that planning process for our media centers, and we'll continue to do Board updates. That brings us to winter and spring of this upcoming school year, where we're actually funding, having funding and financing actions, making some firm educational adequacy decisions, and continuing to update you. Zooming forward into fall of '25, which is the bidding and contract awards that Matt talked about. And then summer of '26, construction starts. That brings us to the end of our presentation, Board. What questions do you have for any of us?
Thanks for the update, it was awesome. I have a question for Vaughn, or at least it was on Vaughn's slide, regarding the schematic design. And I think that initial phase was like one to two months, I think you may have said. My question is, how much information can we use from the long-range planning meetings and discussions we've had to potentially, you know, like compress the timeline there, like as opposed to like rework? How much of that can we reuse for that phase?
I think the best way to look at that would be, we know that that was sort of the big picture overall that we want to do, and those are the district guidelines that we would present that core planning group with and say, these are the expectations that we think these spaces need to follow. This is the parameters that the Board has put on this, and so that will influence it. But one of the reasons that I hesitate to compress the schematic design phase or the user group phase is it's really important to have the ownership of those decisions with the people as opposed to with us as architects. And I don't want to feel like we've marginalized that by saying, you get less time to do it. And within our overall schedule, it still fits. And so, if there was a need to do that, we certainly could. But I think that you'd be better off saying, where can we find time during construction documents, maybe? Or what can we do to overlap the design development and the construction documents phase to find some of those efficiencies as opposed to do it at that time? It also takes, just to get up to speed, it takes a couple weeks in between for us to diagram things, draw them out, bring them back to that group. Now, that said, we're talking about media centers as opposed to designing a whole elementary school. And so, usually this takes five, six meetings. We might find that after four meetings, people say, no, we've got that. Everything we've talked about, this is here, we're there. And so, there's some opportunity for that as well, if all that makes sense.
No, it doesn't. I didn't mean for it to come out like compressed from a timeline. I meant like for what you guys have already sketched out and vetted out, right? Like, what can we just kind of lift and shift as opposed to need to redesign?
Yeah, we're not reinventing the wheel. We're going to present them with, these are the parameters, this is the scope that we've talked about, these are the goals we want to achieve. Now, how do we want to do that within each of the buildings, and what does that look like? So, getting more into those ideas.
Yeah, good, thanks.
Absolutely.
My question is about the core planning group. How are we going to ensure that we get wide representation from the community and people feel like they have a chance to be heard about these?
This is a good question for Lynn and I to answer together, because you know your community better than we do. We'll talk about, you know, these should be people that have big-picture vision around things as opposed to detailed space, but you're going to help us identify who those people are. Who are the right staff, who are the right administrators, who are the right community members? I don't think it needs to be, the principal of every building is part of the core planning group as a default. I think that we could say, we need some principals involved with this. And we're going to certainly work with each of the principals, for example, and the staff, the media specialists for those spaces, but they don't all have to be part of those core planning group members. So, we're going to go through the process for, how do you want to determine that? Do you want to invite people? Do you want to have an open invitation process for doing this? To figure out who those people might be, to get at the best individuals for that. As well, like I said, those middle-school students, I highly encourage districts, and when you can have students onboard, they often open adults' eyes, because adults have different anxieties than students do, and they can give us a very real picture, especially the seventh and eighth grade, of this was the experience we had going through here, and this is what I wish was different, so.
I have a more financial question, which is the, everything we've talked about in terms of issuing bonds to access funding sooner is for the capital side of the funding, is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so the operating, that's why we...
So, we're not going, we're not going, we're not going to issue any working cash bonds for operating. These are only explicitly going to be for capital use.
Yeah, so, my, just so I know that I'm clear, that's why when we talk about the budget, we have to talk about Board tolerance for deficit, because none of those monies for the operating side are going to come until 2026, 2027.
26, 27?
Yeah, okay, thank you. I just, I had, I figured it out, but I just wanted to make sure I was clear on it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any additional questions. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the new business list is the Intergovernmental Agreement Regarding Use and Maintenance of Property with Round Lake Park District. Is that Mr. Wildman?
Okay, the Intergovernmental Agreement Act authorizes school districts into intergovernmental agreements with other entities. We have a very similar agreement with Grey's Lake Park District that we entered into two and a half years ago. This agreement that's being presented is because the current agreement that we have was created when Park was built, and it had a 20-year life, and it was actually, actually, it was entered into in September of 2004. So, it will expire September of 2024. That agreement didn't have a lot of... That agreement didn't have a lot of information about how the school district and the Park District, we're going to actually share the building. It's very actually light on that area and was really heavy on impact fees, which were very important at the time. Those impact fees no longer viable, then all longer, we're not receiving impact fees. So we really wanted to enter into an agreement which codified a modern agreement, which made sure that everything was in place. So the highlights of what we've presented to you, that we really clarify the roles and responsibilities regarding our responsibilities and their responsibilities for cleaning. We have what are called permities. So these are groups which the Park District will allow for use, and we will allow for use as an extension of ourselves and them. And then we talked about bringing a gymnasium improvement plan, which is something that we've literally had on the agenda as an example tonight from Grayslake. So we took the existing agreement from Grayslake, which has, I think, been pretty successful. We presented it to Round Lake. They liked it. They will be presenting it in June or July. They couldn't tell me which meeting was available for them because of their scheduling. But I think it's a really nice agreement because it moves forward, removes a lot of the old language of impact fees, and really puts us on the same standing with Grayslake.
Sounds good. Any questions or comments or, no? Thank you, Mr. Wildman. Okay, that brings us to topics for future agenda items this evening.
Yes, sir. Next board meeting, we'll start with a 5 o'clock finance committee meeting. The focus, as per the board's request at our meeting last, our last meeting, was the economic incentive discussion. And we have representatives from the law firm of Robbins Schwarz attending that meeting. Then we will have a presentation that will be the strategic goals update, where we'll review the work this year of the school district in relation to the strategic plan, along with our plans, what our plans are for the upcoming school year in relation to the strategic plan. That moves us into discussions, and one will be a discussion about strategic planning. I would like for the board to be thinking about, at what point do you want to dive back into fresh strategic planning? Is it something you want to do in the '24, '25 school year? Do you want to wait till '25, '26? There are some options there. And so we're going to want you to be thinking about that. There'll also be a discussion about, I'll share information from the Guardian Teacher Advisory Committee. That's a committee that I met with twice in May to discuss matters of student discipline and some recommendations that came from that committee. And then we have a whole bunch of approvals. The tentative budget, I'll read it very properly for you, Mr. Wildman. T tentative fiscal year '25 budget and approval to publish a legal notice for the public hearing. And the public hearing will be in September, September 18th. We'll be bringing in approval for exempt staff contracts, a contract for GHA, Gaywalt's Hewitt and Associates for continuing leadership in our O and M department. That's how we have Mr. Scott Gonkey here, and we'd like to keep him here. So we have to renew that contract. We'll bring you, I believe, tell me if I'm right, Ms. Pelser, Forward Edge Managed Service Renewals. Yep, we'll have that. And an IGA, that IGA with the Round Lake Park District, District Action, yep. So that's what I have for the next board meeting. Cabinet members, did I miss anything? Was that everything? I think that was it. Okay. And then July 17th, we have that 5 o'clock GMS PLEC ceremony, ribbon cutting. We have an action, oh, we need to have, that's what we missed. Thank you. Okay, also discussion at the next meeting will be information about parent square. Got to put that on here, parent square, which I alluded to at an earlier board meeting that we were looking into bringing forth what we believe is, will be a more effective tool for communicating with our parents, an easier way for us to connect with our parents rather than just communicating through IC. So Amanda, IC, Infinite Campus. Amanda will talk with you about that at the next board meeting. And if you are interested in moving forward, she will bring an action to you on July 17th. And then also, we will have a presentation on July 17th. Part of this year's strategic plan goal included looking into solar power in buildings that don't currently have it. So we'll be presenting about that. I believe Forward Edge is attending. Is that correct?
Performance Services.
That's what I meant to say. It's not what I wrote at all, however. Performance Services, thank you for listening. Oh, it's been a long day. Okay, Performance Services, yes. It wouldn't help at all for our tech group.
I panicked a little.
That would be awful. They don't know anything at all. Performance Services will be attending. Does anybody have anything, any, first, I want to ask my cabinet members if I missed anything for the July 17th? Okay, and board members, is there anything you'd hope to hear that you did not hear for upcoming meetings or upcoming topics in these meetings? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Glickman. We have our public comment moment here. We have signatures, I'm assuming, on the list?
Correct. We have Sarah Jennings.
Yes, okay. Should be a little button on that microphone there for you, and then please say your name again.
Sarah Jennings.
Welcome.
Is this being recorded? I was just curious. I've never heard of one of these.
It is, yes, it's a public, yeah.
Is it going to be like on YouTube or something?
Yes.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify before I get started. So my name is Sarah Jennings. I know I don't have, I only have like four minutes or something. I just have some questions. I'm here for the student voice about the schedule changes that are happening next year at both Frederick and the Grayslake Middle School. So I'm not sure, I'm sure the board is aware, not sure, I think, of the changes, but I just have some questions. So I understand that drama is going to be removed from encore classes. I'm just wondering how come that was selected besides art, the other choices? Like why, why drama? That's my first question.
This is the public comment portion of the meeting. So we will take your comments, but we will respond separately.
Oh.
Right, it's not part of the meeting. It's just for the public to comment.
Got it.
So you can certainly go through all of it.
Yes, I will.
We'll take it in.
Thank you so much. Okay, so that was my first question. Another question, it looks like the encore meet classes are being removed from Grayslake Middle School in order to provide interventions for everyone, for all the students, which I'm thinking not all students would need interventions. And so now they are going to have a study hall essentially, when they may not need it. So that's my other question. Why do all students need an intervention when they may not need it? Also, here at Frederick, there used to be encore and banned for all students. It was removed after a vote years and years ago and never came back. So after the referendum had passed, I don't know why that has never come back. The reason why I'm concerned as a parent and as a community member and bringing my own child's voice into this is I have a child who has autism. He is finally in band and has a sense of belonging in band. Because he had drama, he finally had an opportunity to learn how to talk in front of people and connect with people, and now he's got to choose between the two. He now is telling me he doesn't want to be in band, which is a huge bummer because he really felt like he belonged. So I understand the wanting to be equal, but you have to understand that that's not reality in the world. And taking some things away from some students is hurting other students. So I understand there needs to be a fine balance. I get that. So that's my question. Why drama? When I read through everything, it said that it's going to be removed from four to three to be consistent in the grading structure. To me, that's not a good reason to remove one of the four options, in my opinion. Okay, what's the other thing? I have more. I know I do. Let's see. Oh, the classes. The classes are now going to be stretched, to be bigger as far as time. So if I were an English teacher who currently had, let's say, 30 students, I would like to know how many students that same teacher is going to have next year? Are they not going to have double? Because now the class is double. So that goes for math, that goes for science, that goes for any science, social studies, any class that is now going from a normal class period to a longer class period. I would like to know what's going to be the teacher-student ratio. No more homeroom. Not a huge deal. However, students who are coming from a school that they have never had any other difference from kindergarten through fourth, now coming into Frederick, does that mean the first period is going to have homeroom included, kind of like rolled into it? Will it be a little bit longer than all the other classes? My other question is recess. I understand recess now is going to be over the same time as lunch. Okay, a lot of people don't know this. I've been here way too long. I have a sister who's lived here since 1993. Frederick used to allow students to either come into the lunchroom and play board games or they could go outside to the open field with nothing, which I'm always like, why is there nothing out there? So my question is, now we're taking, then it went to, you have to be outside, but you can come in if it's too cold. Well, now that we're having recess and lunch at the same time, what's going to happen when it's too cold? Where are those kids going to go? They can't come into the lunchroom now because now the kids are having lunch. So my question is, I just feel like as a community member, this hasn't really, perhaps it has been thought all the way out. I could be totally wrong. I'm just here to, seeking to understand. So there was, I guess, a two-year study with community members, teachers, et cetera. I would like to know what research was done to decide that a longer English class with more students per ratio, I would like to see the research that says that that is a better solution or a better way of educating. I do think a long classroom period is, obviously, you could get a lot more done. But I think if you're, you have to weigh the benefits with the, I'm sorry. I was up until like 1:00 working last night, so it's hard for me to think. The advantages and the disadvantages. So perhaps you have more time to get through more subject, but if you now have a classroom with 60 kids versus 30 kids, that you have to kind of weigh the benefits and the downfalls. So those are just my concerns. Coming from a student who has extremely benefited from having both, when I know that Frederick used to have both, I just don't understand why things are being taken away, especially when our taxes are going up. It's just hard to swallow, but that's hard for everybody. That's really all I have. So my question for Stephen, is it Stephen? When should I expect a response?
Yes, Dr. Glickman can answer that for you.
Certainly. Mrs. Jennings, these are a lot of complicated questions. And Ms. Luck and I would really love to sit down and talk with you. So perhaps when we're done with the meeting, we could schedule that time.
I would love that too, but I would actually like it better if all the community could hear the responses because I think it's important as a parent and all parents to hear the changes. So is it something that we can address maybe in the next meeting?
Some of these questions, it's hard to, I don't want to put anyone on the spot here.
Yeah.
I'd like to meet first.
Okay.
I'd like for us to meet first.
Sure.
Just to provide some background and some information, and we can go from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we do have a closed session this evening. So I do need a motion to move into closed session. And in accordance with Illinois state law, we are meeting in closed session pertaining to Public Act 5, Illinois CS 120 slash 2, paragraph C1, "The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodge against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity." I need a motion to move us into that.
I will make that motion.
I will second.
Okay.
Nash?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Albert?
Aye.
And Braden?
Aye.
And we do not anticipate doing any additional business after the closed session, so we will adjourn directly from the closed session. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening.